Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Board of City Commissioners August 17th meeting to order. Call or roll, please.
Hagee?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Maynard?
Here.
Hall?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Dykstra? We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, okay. If you're able to stand, please stand with me and for our invocation, we'll do the Lord's Prayer, please.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this daily our daily bread; forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and glory forever. Amen.
Vice Mayor Harris, would you lead us in the flag salute, please, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to say welcome to each and every one of you. Glad you're here. And we'll proceed on with the agenda. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor. Harris, motion to have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two is citizens' participation. We do encourage citizens' participation, to come forward and talk to us, maybe enlighten us about some things that we may not know about, or just talk to us what you have on your mind. Is there anyone like to come forward? Okay, no one coming forward, then I'll move on to item number three. Discuss and consider setting one or more special call meetings with regard to the Park Master Plan and workshop to discuss city projects, goals, long-term needs, and funding operations. How about staff report on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission members. We just wanted to gauge the interest and from you collectively and look at some possible dates to hold one or more special call meetings. The first of which would be one with our, that would be focused entirely on the Park Master Plan. We would have the consultant prepare that plan in town to do a kind of detailed overview and presentation of the results of that planning effort and answer any questions that you have. We have checked with that consultant. They're available on August 31st, which would be an open Monday in between meetings, or September 2nd. And if those don't work, we can certainly, which is a Wednesday, if those don't work, we can look at other dates as well.
I mean, September, what did you say, the 1st?
The 2nd.
The 2nd, sir.
2nd of Wednesday.
If we want to stay with the Monday, they are available August 31st, or we could look at, where about you, another date?
Monday would be better for me, but...
How about Commissioner Shaw?
I think August 31st would be fine for me.
What about you? Okay, how about August 31st?
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna have it here?
We would post for a special call, a meeting would do at 6:30 PM if that's the closing.
Okay, does that work for everybody else?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then on item 3B is follow-up from one of our goal-setting workshops earlier in the year. Many commissioners have asked me about a follow-up meeting, and I know I don't want to have you meet with all of your regular meetings, plus the special meeting you just asked for, but I might suggest either Monday, September 14th as an option for that workshop, or taking it into perhaps October, just depending upon the...
Are we looking at having that here, looking to have it at the expo, where we sit around a table? You tell me.
We could do it, we could do it either way. We could, if you have more in mind, kind of a half-day or all-day seminar, then I would proceed.
On Monday, well, I don't know, we could do a half-day for people at work, couldn't we?
No, what I'm suggesting here is if you wanted something shorter, we would, we could do it at 6:30 and devote two or three hours to it, but if the consensus is...
The 14th, I, no, that's not a regular meeting day.
No, we meet on the 7th and 21st.
But is the day the Oklahoma Municipal League Annual Meeting starts, if anybody's planning to go there?
Was that the big deal in Tulsa?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, I'm going to that, so that's...
Is, is the, you said workshop...
I don't know what else on Monday, but it's...
Just when you say the workshop, but is the, is this gonna be presentations, or is it gonna be two-way working discussion around budget items?
Probably primarily a two-way discussion.
Like we had, I think.
Well, I kinda like the roundtable format and everything out there that we do on Saturday on a half-a-day type thing, but we're getting into football season too, though, so maybe for Monday or Friday.
Priorities, right.
Okay. James has got his straight, he says.
I hear perhaps a Friday, maybe Friday...
Is there anything, I don't want to move it back into October. We need, we've got a lot we need to talk about, if at all possible. What about the 18th or 11th?
Of September?
Yeah.
Friday, the 18th.
I don't know, is that...
Yeah, Friday would work for me.
Would Friday work?
Bating ass, standing bats on the 17th, is that a Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 17th's a Thursday. So are you thinking about planning meeting on the 18th?
If it, you know...
You think we could maybe start at 5:00 or 5:30?
If you wanted to have a...
I'm just asking, I don't know. I think we were...
I don't know how many people, people are fresh at 5:30 to go in.
I know, I have it on 5:30 on Friday.
You don't?
Nope.
You want to have it on noon, start at noon on Friday?
Well...
Is it possible to have it on a Saturday? I know I heard football here, but the 12th or the 19th?
12th or the 19th, do you know if there's...
I know the 12th and I think both, those Saturdays are out.
You're going to Central Arkansas?
Uh-huh.
You're going to Central Arkansas?
Yeah.
What about the 5th?
I got people going with me.
I'm out of...
That's like a weekend.
You're at, okay. 26th?
I'm telling you, you're gonna have a hard time on Saturday days.
Okay. Well, Friday or Monday, y'all tell me which one.
I'd rather have it on Monday.
Why is it gonna be a hard time on Saturday?
Ballgames.
But we gotta get our priorities straight.
That's right.
I'm with you. Linda, but you and I are not huge, you and I are not huge football fans.
Well, we're taking off a day at work, I can do it on a workday. Friday or Monday, sounds good to me. That's putting, we're gonna vote my work party.
Friday evening, to me, just seems like a redundancy. I mean, with everything already on it, Saturday is best for me, a Saturday for this kind of retreat, for three hours.
It's been on Monday when you have, don't have a commission meeting.
Some of us still work.
Right.
Some of us still work.
Well, I would rather have two Mondays short sessions, maybe, that go from like 6:00, let's say, to 8:00 or 8:30, and then come back in two weeks after we've got a chance to think about some of that stuff or about something else. I'm just...
We could break it up, we could...
I'm just saying, if we want...
James, have you got something on September 5th, on that Saturday morning? I don't know when O S U plays.
They plan on the 3rd, but that's Labor Day weekend.
Yeah, it's Labor Day weekend.
Yeah, I don't...
Well, my priority is we can do it September 5th, that's high priority.
My wife has already got me lined out for Labor Day, so...
Well, what's that, Monday after that? September the 5th is on a, what, Monday?
Monday after that's a 7th.
Well, 6th is Tuesday, that's why we have a commission meeting.
No, 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 7th is commission meeting.
8th is, September is the 8th, because the 7th is Labor Day. It's Tuesday, the 8th, is your first meeting in September.
So we could look, and the following Monday's the 14th, Monday between.
What, I mean, that's off Monday, that's what I'm saying, that on, off Monday, if you don't have a commission meeting, if you're gonna do it at 6:30 or 6:50, what's wrong with that?
Now, let's just bring this to a head. Who wants Monday at?
Labor Day evening?
We're talking about planning meetings.
The evening of Labor Day, as you said?
No, no, the following Monday.
The following Monday?
14th.
I'll just clear my schedule, Monday or Friday. Linda's right, priorities are priorities.
Okay, how many of you want Monday?
I can do a Monday or Friday.
I'll do whatever.
I'll do whatever, so...
Monday's good.
Okay, okay, then we'll go Monday. Monday, the 14th, fair enough?
What time?
How about 6:00? Can you make it at 6:00?
Yeah.
Is that tough, Michael? You tell me.
I'm gonna be working out of Tulsa for a little while, but yeah, I can make it. 6:00?
Yeah, 6:00 on Monday, the 14th. Okay, let's put that on our calendars for planning session. 6:00 PM. Where we gonna do that? You're gonna let us know where we're gonna do it?
Yes, sir.
I prefer a roundtable or something, so that we're all kind of...
My gosh.
Yeah, or whatever, I just don't, I don't, I just don't want to be sitting up here, you know, and I think it'd be better to...
Okay. Staff will work on the location, of course, we'll get the proper notice out. And the meeting on August 31st, that will be at 6:30 PM here, that will be more of a traditional setting.
Right.
Okay.
Put the PowerPoint and all that.
Thank you.
Okay, we've handled item number three. Let's try number four. Consideration of approval of preliminary plat for Shawnee Auto Mall located on Shawnee Mall Drive east of Union Street. Applicant Hewitt Zollers Incorporated. Staff report in this matter, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This specific site, Shawnee Auto Mall, came up before you, March 16th. So this is actually just a redesign on the preliminary plat with a few changes. Better fit what they're trying to do here. To give a brief overview, the site is 21 acres in size, and there will be four total lots, roughly four and a half acres in size on each, each one of these lots. There'll be one public access drive, which is considered a collector's street, and will require a four-foot sidewalk along the length of this, along with a six-foot sidewalk along Shawnee Mall Drive. Stormwater retention will be placed on the north side at the back there, and the one variance that is requested today would be, we have an allowance for 500 foot in length on those cul-de-sacs. They are requesting a variance, which we do allow up to 1,000 feet for cul-de-sacs. The total length on the requested cul-de-sac is 773 feet, and this is to allow the public street to access all four lots that do require the frontage necessary on this site. Both myself and staff, including the city engineer, have looked at this site and are happy with it. Easements all meet, sewer and water all, as we would hope at this point, same with stormwater drainage. So staff has listed five recommendations here for approval, and we're all supporting a recommendation of approval from the planning commission, so staff does approve, recommend approval on this, this case.
They're saying the planning commission hasn't seen this yet.
They have seen it, yes, they recommended approval.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you're satisfied with the drainage and everything?
So far, being that it's preliminary plat, it's very basic level that they're showing, but as we move forward, of course, we wouldn't final plat this until we were completely satisfied. So at this point, they will submit those drainage reports to John, and both he and I will look at those before that gets approved.
Did you say there was any concerns over the 500-foot variance request?
No concerns, we have a precedent set that we typically allow in these cases, especially on these larger commercial lots where they do have a, they can't surpass 30% maximum coverage on those sites, and considering the size of this site, lengthening each one of those lots wouldn't be appropriate, so the allowance of that extended roughly 200 feet does not pose a problem for us.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are they gonna be filling in part of that retention pond that's there?
I feel...
It looks like they might have to, based on...
Well, you mean to want it way back there?
Well, as far as the whole site together, there was that pond that was on-site, and at one point they had filled in portions of that. We don't have a dirt move permit in Shawnee, so a lot of that dirt was moved before it ever came to, came to us for preliminary plat. So at this point, the way it looks, I would suspect that there might be some more grading and leveling that would need to be done on that site.
Interesting. Any questions, others? Let me just ask a question, when you said a sidewalk, I'm a little concerned about that road is so busy and it's basically a two-lane. What would it cost the city to add two feet when they're pouring the sidewalk from 6 to 10 feet? I mean, you know what I'm saying? What is our normal sidewalk, and what did we build, our four feet? I just wonder if that, we could figure out a way to get a 10-foot walk down through there, 'cause I firmly believe people walking from the motels and hotels and stuff, you know, might want to walk there, and it's gonna be pretty tight. I'm just throwing that out.
Sure.
I don't know an answer to that, and maybe the commission doesn't, doesn't think that, but you know, if we require, what, a six-foot walk?
Correct.
So what, I mean, what's the one on Brian? 10-foot?
It's a 10-foot trail, that's on Brian there.
Okay, but I mean, with an extra two feet, and I don't know what it would cost us, help or not? I just worry about that, because that's a, that, there's traffic is huge.
Well, it doesn't have a consistent sidewalk down in any way.
No.
It doesn't have a consistent, even if they built the sidewalk, you'd have...
It wouldn't tie into anything else.
Yeah, it wouldn't tie into anything else.
Okay.
Railroad backage, if not anything else.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, this is...
But that lot is for sale there from the railroad back.
At some, at some point, we need to address this whole sidewalk issue.
Sure, no doubt, no doubt about it.
The four-foot sidewalk, it's going perpendicular, it's going north and south?
Correct, yep, yep. So as a collector's street, the one going north and south, which would be Auto Mall Drive, is considered a collector, so collectors would be four-foot, and then the perimeter road, Shawnee Mall Drive there, would be six-foot, would be the requirement there.
So, is it on the plat that they, do you actually know where that retention pond's gonna be?
Yeah, so actually Exhibit 1 here will be the preliminary plat, and as it's posed, it'd be along the north, the north side of the plat. I'm trying to see here if it gives, we don't actually have that dimension there.
I thought, I didn't, they'll have material on hand they'll have to get rid of, so they'd probably use that to fill that in, what was standing in water here the other day.
Sure.
Boy, they'd spend a lot of money hauling dirt out there.
Well, I'd have to force hold that dirt, it's been expensive project. You take, get paid to take it out, and then you pay to put it back.
Okay, guys, I'll take a motion on this matter.
I suppose we approve the plat?
I'll second it.
With the conditions?
Yeah, with the conditions.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Harris, a second by Commissioner Hagee. Let's vote. Motion carries.
So, how long does it, do they have to progress or start construction, or do they have a year, two years, or what is it?
For preliminary plats, I believe that is two years to get that final plat in.
All right, thank you, Ted.
Item number five, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve collective bargaining agreement with the IUPA Police. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, staff does recommend approval of the collective bargaining agreement with the IUPA, Local Number 3 Police Union. I'd like to thank the members of the bargaining team, which included Tammy Johnson, Cindy Semantelli, and Mary Ann Carnes. The agreement before you is very similar to last year's agreement. This does run through our fiscal year. The one, the two primary things that it does is it adds a step for those members that are, that are topped out, because there's not any additional steps in the, in the pay scale. So it does do that, and it brings us a little bit closer to meeting kind of the average pay of the five cities below, you're slightly smaller, slightly above Shawnee's population. It also modifies the maximum accrual of comp time, which is allowed from 120 hours to 240, which is the same that we have for non-union employees. So based on our review, and based on the limited budgetary impact of about $19,185, staff does recommend approval of the CBA, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is that the total of budgetary impact?
That's for the six months, the step would be take place January 1st.
Okay, and then what would we anticipate?
It's $38,000 a year.
Okay.
So, it's not the July 1st, it's start January 1st?
That's correct, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by...
Second.
Commissioner Hall, and a second by Michael Dykstra. Commissioner Dykstra, let's vote. Motion carries. Acknowledged sales tax report received August 2015. About time you came, so...
Sales tax this month was $1,588,000, which was up $156,000 from last year, or 10.9%. The new development behind properties is helping. That's about, I think about $35,000 right now per month. So far, so far in the few months that they've been open, it's been a total of $78,000, and that's through June 30th.
Is that taken out what we owe them?
No.
How much do we owe?
If it's $78,000, we roughly owe them $50,000, and then we keep the 25.
So it's a net, net of about 28, huh?
Now, now, some of that, like all these, we'll get 100% of that, won't we? Because that's, isn't that the way that works? I thought that was...
No.
Thought that was, since we already have grocery stores, I thought that...
No, not in the contract.
It's for any store that relocates, so for...
If I'm not mistaken, that's relocated.
Yeah, we were talking about stipulations.
Okay.
Somebody was thinking about...
That's how they define cannibalism.
So do they bill us, or what, how do they work that?
Well, we have to accept the as-built first, and we have not done that. They haven't brought that to the commission. They're still doing the final tally, and then we'll start paying them back quarterly. I can't remember, is it quarterly or monthly?
I think it's quarterly.
Quarterly, because monthly is just, I haven't gotten the, you know, the backup yet for the $1.5 million that's not out in the system yet. Use tax was up 155, up to $155,000 this month, which is up 50 grand. So we're starting to see some of the building materials that have come in, and that's 100% ours. So, and also on the dais, I gave you just a couple of little things. Top revenues, the sheet, these are just like the sales tax, use tax, and this is, runs from July 1st to June 30th on a cash basis, it's not on an accrual basis. And as you see, those top 10 revenue, those top 10, because 18 is not very big, is 70% of our budget.
Is that as of July 31st, or what's...
As of June 30th.
Okay.
And this is based on a cash basis, is when we receive it. At this time of the year, I'm turning everything into an accrual basis, so like our sales tax, actually, I'm sorry, let me rephrase it, this is based on the accrual. Basically, for the sales, for sales tax, we take all of July and half of August and back it into last year's, because the big boxes go from the 15 to the 15. And this, this one, which I made a typo and I apologize, Phyllis caught it, thank you. I sent you a new copy. This, this column here just needs to move down one, it's off. These are the top, like retail trades, accommodation, food service for the full fiscal year, so...
Cindy, is there any idea, or can you maybe educate me on why we're seeing that kind of decrease in our occupational tax?
I was gonna ask that, too. Is that, what is that? Is that hotel, motel tax?
No, that is more like, it's in for like, it's a building thing.
License fees?
License fees.
Plumber?
It's a very small, no, that's a whole different, that's building permits. This is... I'll have to double-check, I can't think off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Which one are you talking about?
Occupational tax, no, on the next page, go back to the little short page. See that one? It's down 14%.
But see, it's, like this year's $13,000, last year was $15,000, so I mean, I don't know if something hasn't come in yet.
Percentage-wise, it looks big, but it's not that much.
Yeah, I don't know if something's still, that's, actually, that's from the state. I'd have to double-check exactly if that is, I apologize, I don't know.
And the same, I guess, question in regard to Allegiant Survive, is that because of the change in that?
People are changing, I mean...
Yeah, they're dropping cable.
Oh, U-verse came in, didn't it? So now we have U-verse service as well.
You have U-verse, you have Direct, you have Dish, so...
Netflix.
A lot of people are going that, and it doesn't, Kendall, Amazon has something too, that it's a device that you can watch, get all the cables changed, like a hundred dollars.
Well, I hope we support them, because I'll tell you, they have got a huge capital investment in our community, we went out and toured that facility. Man, oh man, they are doing phone calls from five states there at their call center.
But I have noticed in the, in the trend, I mean, it really was bad about a year ago, and it's starting to come up a little bit, so hopefully it's gonna rebound.
Because they have, fast with internet, maybe, I mean, it just...
Well, I don't know what area you are living in, but at my area, that, that internet is slower than the AT&amp;T was.
Really, Vive is?
Vive is, and I have the largest package. Yes.
When I was on, when I was on Vive, we talked to people in California, and they came up on our computer before it did there.
You think they're aware of that?
Well, I, 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 as a customer, have tried to make that awareness known, so...
I dare tell you, next time I'm with them, I'm gonna bring that up, because I thought they indicated that that was one of the real strengths of our system.
Right, it's fucking really fantastic.
Was not like AT&amp;T, because the farther you get from our phone place up here with AT&amp;T, it seems to slow up. One right here on Broadway, just north of, and that, I was out there, and they were indicating that that was one of their strong suits, the internet, so I'll, I'll follow up.
I think they have probably the highest megabytes that's available, however, a couple of their weaknesses from the customer service point is the fact they don't return calls, or haven't, timely, and the fact that their process is, when trying to link to, to my particular system, which I've got newer systems, isn't integrating. But overall, the top...
Tell them about your problem, I'll tell them.
Overall, we're, you know, 2.2% over last year, which is pretty much flat, but better than I think.
Well, all these may help a little bit, it's packed up there again today, so...
Because they opened it last week?
They opened this week, I think.
13th, I think.
Friday?
What? Phyllis, didn't this franchise tax, didn't it used to be called something else? Fees, wasn't it?
I hope it was the franchise tax.
Right, there's Terry Powell, you remember John, didn't we change it from fees to taxes?
Yeah, to help that, on the ballot, the word changed from fees to taxes.
That's what it is. We might want to take a look at that, so some of them refuse to pay taxes, but they have to pay fees.
Is the real estate and rental and leasing, is that, enlighten me a little bit on that one, somebody? On the wide sheet?
I'll have to look that up and see what it is for the state.
Okay.
Because it's not, I'm sorry, I concentrate on the larger ones.
How, is that lake rental, you think, or?
What's that?
Rental, real estate rental and leasing, on the big spreadsheet you've got there.
Could be.
It could be like, I'll tell you.
That's turned back into, that's some sort of fees that the state charges.
Yeah.
That real estate agents are wanting to make a house sale or something.
Well, now, that real estate rental and leasing, that's money coming into the city, so that's what you get on your tower with leases and stuff like that, it's...
Well, this is the stuff that goes to the, it's Oklahoma Tax Commission, comes back to us.
Comes back, yeah.
So some sort of...
Sorry to, geez you, but I thought it'd be kind of interesting to know what that is, yeah.
What is the nuisance tax?
Nuisance tax is liens that we put on, and the county collects, and we get it back.
Okay, it looks, it looks like it's up quite a bit.
It all depends, I mean...
Oh, okay.
It depends if people don't follow our codes, and then we file, you know, like mowing and all that stuff, and...
Okay, thank you.
Very good report.
Okay, Mr. Erickson, how about an update?
I have a couple of brief updates for you this evening. Our, our first Shawnee splash season is winding down through a close, and I thought you would like to know some, some numbers as we, as we near that, that close date. as we, as we near that, that close date. We were just under twenty-nine thousand participants that have walked through the doors at the pool since it's, since it opens, or about twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-four last count. That averages out to about five hundred and fifty a day on average. Some days are a lot more, some days are a lot less, depending upon the weather. On our dollar days, that ended up being almost just too successful, because it was a challenge to staff it, and a challenge to kind of enforce the pool rules. But on those dollar Wednesdays, we were having over a thousand attendees at each one of those events. So that's, that's just wonderful that we were able to make it available. What we have now through Labor Day, is we have some limited hours, there's some aerobics classes going on, there are some open swim times on Saturdays, and then we have the splash portion of the park open during regular, kind of like a twelve to eight P.M. hours for, for people to utilize, because we don't need lifeguards on duty for, for that. So it's part of the reason for the cross fencing through that facility. So you'll still see, see people, people out there through, through Labor Day, in terms of the general public, beyond Labor Day. We do have some, some agreements in place for some of the universities, like OU, to, to utilize the facility for, with their swim team. So we're, you know, hopeful that that facility can be used for, maybe through part of October at least. The second update that I had for you this evening was on fire station number two at Bryan Street. We have completed kind of the first phase of that endeavor, which is the removal of the, of the mold and, and any affected parts. We're also, we've also engaged a, an architect to take a look at the building, so that we know what we need to do long-term to fix it, so that we don't have this problem fibers down the road like we, like we did a few years ago. And so we met up there last week with them. We've also had the city's engineering staff look at that side and take some elevation shots, and so they can devise a plan in terms of how we're gonna have to regrade that property and, and improve the drainage on there, so that we can improve that building and ensure that it's gonna, that we're gonna get some useful life after it, on it after that. And so I think right now, it's safe to say that we are looking at some major repairs related to grading in concrete, probably the roof, and probably much of the siding around the building. So I don't have any actual hard construction costs or numbers for you at this time. I should have those-
What did that building cost?
Total cost, I think, was around four hundred and fifty?
Around four hundred and thousand.
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
You may be talking about that most of the-
And we, and we may be. Fire stations today routinely cost over two hundred dollars a square foot, and that's about a ten thousand square foot facility. So a, a new station that size could easily cost two million dollars plus. We're, we don't know at this point what it's gonna take or what it's gonna cost, but we're, we're being prudent and, and doing a good investigation on it. So I hope to have some more information for you at the first meeting in September.
Justin, could you also put that on as an agenda item on our retreat list, please?
Absolutely. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Now, you need new business? I didn't ask, any, okay, no new business. Okay, it's time for Commissioners' comments. Anybody like to say anything to the rest of us, or to the group?
Well, I have a couple of things, if I may. One, I'd like to certainly extend my appreciation to those staff who made that impossible, that possible, I guess. I'm having problems with my oral presentation tonight. I apologize for that. But for the staff who've really dedicated a lot of time and energy to the dollar days on Wednesday, and to get those numbers up to a thousand a day is incredible, so thank you and your staff. The second item is, I'd like to again indicate to everyone that the library is an incredible place to go. It has so many services that it offers. It does so many things for the children, as well as the elders, on a constant and consistent basis, that I can't begin to say enough good things about the Pioneer Libraries. The third thing is Aldi. I did have the, the good fortune to go out there. I think Aldi is going to really offer a lot to the community. However, I, as an individual, would hesitate to go out there consistently, because I'm fairly lazy about putting a quarter into their, their, their basket and pulling it back over. I told my husband it'd be worth it just to leave it there on the, on the parking lot, instead of pushing it back, and, but-
If a lot of people feel like you, I might go out there and make some money.
Yeah, exactly.
There you go, there you go.
That's your after-hours job, Mike.
And sacking. I really don't like having to sack, so. But it does appear to have a, a wide variation of goods and, out there that's really, I think, going to offer to the community over in that area. So welcome, Aldi.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to, to Tammy Johnson, Cindy Semitellian, Marianne Karns, for, and the police union for working out that deal. I think you guys did a great job, and it's important to, yeah, be recognized, I think, and keep up the good work. It's good to, to have that incentive for us to keep our, our good police officers and keep them here longer, give them, give them incentive. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have something briefly to say. I was going to a store, right there in the area where the new Shawnee marketplace has gone in, and I remember one time, a couple of years ago, somebody saying that there's traffic jams in Edmund and Moore and Midwest City, and wouldn't it be nice to see a traffic jam here in Shawnee? Well, I think we've succeeded. And what, what I'm hoping is that people like myself that like to avoid traffic jams, it will drive some of that traffic further south to some of the other businesses in Shawnee, and, you know, and more toward downtown, Long Kikapoo and places like that. So I'm hoping, and I do think, that we'll see an overflow. If we have more people coming from the outline areas that don't have some of these stores that we have here now, that offer people greater choices, that while they're shopping there, then some people like to avoid those crowds, we'll have some other places to go further south. So we concentrate on that.
Like downtown?
Yes.
I have a comment. Donna Ray texted me during the executive session to tell me that I was incorrect on my comment. So I don't like to eat crow, but I guess I will, Donna, and I apologize to you and the, and the other reporter. But anyhow, like I said, what, the one I looked at, and I didn't do a complete enough job, and I guess, I'm sorry that I missed Wayne's editorial about me, but I guess I think it was pretty blistering, so I missed probably well earned. Thank you.
I saved it for you, James.
But I'll eat that crow, I'm sorry.
Keith, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Just a comment about, I have a good friend that I play golf with from time to time, and teaches, I say teaches, goes over and volunteers to help children learn how to read at Horseman. And so he went over there last week, the first day of school, to meet the first grade students, and somehow, the pool came up. And he asked the question, in three different classes, if raise your hand if you went to the pool or the splash pad. And he said there were two kids in three classes, is all, that didn't raise their hands, that they could not talk about it enough, how wonderful. And, you know, I go back to that, our pool is wonderful, but that splash pad over there, for so many of those young children may not have air conditioning in their home, and may not, you know, and to see them over there playing is just the most wonderful, wonderful thing. And I commend the commission for funding that, and the city staff for what we did on that. And John, you really pushed that thing that quick, and ordered the equipment and things, and it's a true, it's a wonderful thing for our city, and especially for the people that, you know, we think about a dollar, but, you know, those, a lot of those kids may not can afford it, and they go over to that splash pad there and walk over. So again, it's a wonderful thing, and that's great success. Now, we're gonna keep that open for a long time, right?
Yes, sir.
Up until it's really cool.
Yes, hopefully, at least through the entire month of September, and, you know, potentially, depending upon the, the temperature, maybe part of October.
Well, I encourage each one of you Commissioners to go by and just look at them over there, because they're just having a big time, especially now, during school, probably Saturday in the afternoons. But anyway, again, okay, anything else? Okay, if not, then I am going to recess our city commission meeting, and I'm going to go to the Shawnee Airport Authority. I will call it to order and declare we have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Vice Mayor Harriet made a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Shaw. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two is consider a resolution accepting the grant agreement contingent on grant offer for airport improvement program, AIP project number three, oh oh four oh 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 eight eight one six two oh y five, from the Federal Aviation Administration at Shawnee Regional Airport to make lighting and equipment improvements. Mr. English?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners? Hopefully, this will be the last little bit of house cleaning we have to do before we can actually start construction on, on these projects. Pretty much what this resolution is doing, it's FAA recommended that I get this before the city commission to approve this resolution, contingent on a grant offer. Now, they haven't offered us the grant quite yet. But what this does is, once, once that offer hits my desk, it authorizes myself, Mr. Erickson, to sign off and approve that grant offer, submit that, and we can get our ninety percent financial match from the FAA. Staff, of course, recommends passing this resolution. I know the FAA, it's typical that they give you a little bit of a timeframe to get that grant offer approved in a pretty short amount of time. So what this does is allow myself and Mr. Erickson to accept that on the city's behalf and move forward with the project.
Chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
Can, have we heard the resolution?
No, we'll read it later after we get a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got two seconds, okay. Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Vice Mayor Harriet, okay. Would you read the resolution, please, ma'am?
The title?
Yes, please.
This is a resolution accepting the grant agreement contingent on grant offer for airport improvement project number three, zero zero four oh dash zero zero eight eight dash sixteen dash twenty fifteen, from the Federal Aviation Administration at Shawnee Regional Airport for lighting and equipment improvements.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion you need?
This is for the beacons, right? Or is, is this for the beacons?
Yeah, for the beacon.
Lighting of the beacons.
Yeah, that he's talked to us about.
Weather protection, yes, just making sure.
Motion carries, okay. Any new business?
Yes, sir.
No new business? Then I will adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority, I mean Airport Authority, and call the Shawnee Municipal Authority to order. I'll call it to order and declare we have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Shaw. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote. Motion carries. Any new business?
Yes, sir, no.
No, no new business, then I'll adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority. I'll reconvene the city commission meeting. And item number ten, is consider executive session to discuss the evaluation and consideration of contract with the city attorney pursuit to two five O.S., discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, discipline, or resignation of any individual salaried public officer or employee. Chair will entertain a motion in that matter.
So moved.
Have a motion to go into executive session on this matter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Shaw. Let's vote. James, it didn't take you. Motion carries. Item number eleven is considering an executive session for discussion and possible action on litigation pending against the city of Shawnee by Rhonda Deneen Goodwin, as authorized by two five O.S. on the recommendation of counsel that public discussion would impair the ability of the city attorney to adequately defend the city. Chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Harriet.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Dykstra. Let's vote. Motion carries, and we will move into executive session at this time, ladies and gentlemen.
Do you want to do the workers' comp case first?
Yes, please, ma'am. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we had two things discussed in the commission meeting. I mean, in executive session.
Were we supposed to knock on the door, ma'am? Were we supposed to knock on the-
Boy, no maintenance noise.
Ah, sorry.
Do you gotta, do you gotta bring us out of executive session?
Yeah, I'm gonna call us back to order, okay? But I, I, we've got two things to vote on, remember, okay? I will call us back to order, the city commission meeting. Item number one, number twelve, was consider matters discussed in executive session regarding discussion, evaluation, and consideration of contract of the city attorney pursuit to twenty-five O.S., discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, discipline, or resignation of any individual salaried public officer or employee. Is there a motion?
I'd move, table this item, and the city, the mayor and Commissioner Agee, get together and work out the details on the contract.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, by Commissioner Agee. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number thirteen, consideration and possible action on matters discussed in executive session regarding litigation pending against the city of Shawnee by Rhonda Deneen Goodwin, as authorized by two five O.S. on the recommendation of counsel that public discussion would impair the ability of the city attorney to adequately defend the city. Ask if there's a motion, I'm asking.
I'll make a motion to authorize attorneys to negotiate within the bounds discussed.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Second, by Vice Mayor. Harriet, let's vote. Motion carries, okay. I will adjourn our city commission.